Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome them all. I'm calling the July 21 City Council meeting to order. And if there is no objection, I'll be chairing tonight's meeting remotely. I am in Texas. Our Sister Cities Commission is receiving a humanitarian award tomorrow for their work in the fundraiser that they did for our sister city, Sheshaw, Morocco, for Atlas Mountain Winter Relief. Is there any objection? And Council President, I will rely on you tonight, so let me know. I have a notepad. Let me know when the microphones are up and if anybody has an objection or a question.
I will do that, and I'm seeing no objections here.
Thank you very much. So as a reminder to the community, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff members and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. Next item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you to join me in that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have some proclamations tonight, and Council President, I am grateful for your organizing our council members to be able to individually help present these. So we'll start with special business item ID 1850, National Night Out Proclamation. And who would like to be presenting this one?
Councilmember Marts is moving up.
I'd also like to invite Police Commander Travis Neath and Issaquah Police Officer Alex Holmes to the lectern.
Unfortunately, it looks like they are not available, so they must be out on a call, but we will definitely have this proclamation and make sure it gets over to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas National Night Out is an annual community-building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safe and more caring places to live, and whereas the city of Issaquah proudly participates in National Night Out, joining thousands of communities nationwide in strengthening relationships between neighbors and law enforcement while fostering a true sense of community. And whereas National Night Out in Issaquah offers families and neighbors the opportunity to connect with their local police officers, enjoy family-friendly activities, and learn more about community safety, crime prevention, and emergency preparedness, whereas this annual event strengthens neighborhood spirit, enhances police-community partnerships, and sends a strong, clear message that Issaquah is united against crime and committed to building a strong and resilient community. Now therefore, Mayor Mary Lou Polly, mayor of the city of Issaquah, did hereby proclaim August 5, 2025, to be National Night Out in the city of Issaquah, and invited the community to join in celebrating and participating in festivities that raise awareness for this important cause. In witness thereof, she set her hand and seal of the city of Issaquah on the 21st day of July 2025. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Marts. The next item on our special business this evening is ID 1851, Park Ranger Day Proclamation. And if we have Issaquah Park Ranger Alex Anderson and Park Ranger Casey Shane, I'd love to invite them up to the lectern.
Whereas World Ranger Day is celebrated worldwide on July 31 to celebrate the work rangers do to protect the planet's natural treasures, cultural heritage, and whereas the city of Issaquah's park rangers serve as stewards and ambassadors of the city's parks, trails, and open spaces, the ranger position is intended to promote a safe and welcoming parks experience through professional interactions with park patrons. And whereas park rangers are responsible for the routine patrol of approximately 1,800 acres of public lands owned by the city of Issaquah, which includes 23 parks, two cemeteries, natural growth protection areas, natural resource conservation areas, wetlands, open spaces, and trails. And whereas park rangers work collaboratively with the Issaquah Police Department, Washington State Agencies, the County Sheriff's Office, and Regional Animal Services of King County to resolve park issues, and whereas park rangers provide education of local codes and laws and respond to calls for service and investigate concerns related to park areas. And whereas park rangers are sometimes the first point of contact for unhoused individuals in city parks, in partnership with Human Services, park rangers provide assistance, guidance, and care through our homeless outreach program. Therefore, Mary Lou Polly, the mayor of the city of Issaquah, does hereby proclaim July 31, 2025, to be Park Ranger Day in the city of Issaquah, and we invite the community to join in thanking our park ranger team for their outstanding service and contribution. Alex, would you like to say something?
Well, first of all, thank you to mayor and council for the recognition. It is kind of a strange time to be a park ranger. There may be some voices out there that are questioning the value of the work that we do and maybe even the value of our public lands themselves. And I think it's really important to remind ourselves that, well, one, how grateful I am to work for a community like Issaquah where there is so much advocacy and so much really outspoken opinion about our public lands, I'm very grateful for that, but also that our public lands do not maintain themselves. We have to actually pay folks to go out and do the hard work of looking after them, and those folks are generally called rangers. So, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Councilmember Ray, and I'd like you guys to get a picture if you can. That would be fantastic. I can't really tell if they've done their picture, but I'm just going to call up the next special business item, ID 1900, the Farmers Market Week Proclamation. And if Recreation Supervisor Kelly Diane is there, I'd love to have her come to the lectern with the council member presenting.
Welcome, Kelly. And we also have Jocelyn Sandrick, the Assistant Market Manager, with us this evening. Whereas farmers' markets play a vital role in providing access to fresh, locally grown produce and other agricultural products, supporting the health and well-being of our communities, and whereas National Farmers Market Week, observed annually the first week of August, recognizes the important role farmers' markets play in our food system and encourages Americans to support local producers by purchasing their products at farmers' markets. And whereas the Issaquah Farmers Market, held each Saturday from May through September at 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the historic Pickering Barn, has served as a beloved gathering place for over 30 years, drawing thousands of residents and visitors annually. And whereas the Issaquah Farmers Market supports more than 100 local vendors, including farmers, bakers, crafters, and prepared food makers, helping to sustain small businesses and strengthen the regional economy. And whereas the market fosters environmental sustainability by encouraging consumption of locally grown seasonal produce, reducing food miles, and supporting eco-friendly farming practices. And whereas the market provides equitable access to fresh and nutritious foods through participation in programs such as SNAP, EBT, and Market Match, reinforcing Issaquah's commitment to food security and health equity. And whereas the market enhances community engagement and connectedness by offering a vibrant and inclusive space for education and engagement where individuals can learn about food, production, nutrition, and connect with neighbors and friends. Now therefore, Mary Lou Polly, mayor of the city of Issaquah, does hereby proclaim the week of August 3 through August 9, 2025, to be Farmers Market Week. Would you like to?
Yeah.
Please.
Thank you, council and mayor, for our proclamation. I wanted to give just a quick snapshot of how the market is doing as of the middle of the season. So we've hit over $1 million in sales to vendors. We've had over 44,000 visitors, 26 volunteers. In May, we introduced the Homegrown Retail Program in partnership with Economic Development, giving eight small businesses based in Issaquah opportunities in a direct consumer marketplace. We launched a Hard to Recycle Program with the city's Solid Waste Program Analyst, Sam Tarvin. So there's a weekly rotation where you can recycle batteries, styrofoam, and plastic film at the market, at the information tent. We've onboarded two new farms this year, Collins Family Orchard and Irish Acres. Dogs are now allowed. Everything's in season right now. Corn is here, tomatoes and peppers, eggplants are all trickling in, stone fruit and berries are better than ever. So please join in celebrating the vibrant community space that we have, where you can make meaningful connections with vendors and your neighbors. We will have some birthday cake on August 9 to celebrate Farmers Market Week and the 35th anniversary of the Issaquah Farmers Market. And thank you from everyone on our team at Pickering Barn.
So while they are posing for a photo, I will just extend a thank you to Kelly Diane and her entire team for really turning our farmers' market into this completely integrated space for all of our different departments to participate. Thank you so much. That was great. Next up, we have ID 1849, Sister Cities Commission. This is the Friendship Day Proclamation. And I'd like to invite Ryan Opitz, co-chair of the Sister Cities Commission, to the lectern if he's in the room. And also just, oh, and Council President.
We're also going to add in Members Wendy McCrory and Victor Bello.
Oh, yeah, 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 of course. And Council President, thank you for doing this one. This is especially poignant to me since we just completed our sister-city visit to Norway, one of the first in a very long time, but also that I have the opportunity, on behalf of these wonderful people standing before you, to receive International Sister Cities Humanitarian Award for the work that they have done over the last few years, supporting our friends in Morocco. So thank you very much for doing this one.
Thank you. So whereas the International Day of Friendship, also known as World Friendship Day, was proclaimed in 2011 by the U.N. General Assembly with the idea that friendship between peoples, countries, cultures, and individuals can inspire peace efforts and build bridges between communities. And whereas the city of Issaquah values its international friendships and its formal sister cities with Sundal, Norway, established in 1991, and Chef Chau in Morocco, established in 2006. And whereas the city of Issaquah Sister Cities Commission is in place to help foster the sisterhood relationships. And whereas the commission works to increase the knowledge, goodwill, and understanding of the world through people-to-people diplomacy, education, and cultural exchange. And whereas the city of Issaquah has a long tradition of promoting diversity, equality, fairness, and friendship. And whereas Issaquah is strengthened by the strong role friendship plays in building trust, promoting peace, and bringing people of different cultures together. Now therefore, I, Lindsay Walsh, on behalf of Mayor Mary Lou Polly of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim July 30, 2025, to be Friendship Day in the city of Issaquah, and I invite the community to join me in celebrating and fostering friendships locally and globally. Would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to thank the mayor and the commission for all of the continued support of the Sister Cities Commission. The last couple of years have been very prosperous for us with, as the mayor said, a trip to Norway that happened last month, some aid work that we did for Morocco last year, bringing an artist over from our sister city in Morocco. We couldn't do any of that without the mayor's and the council's support. So thank you very much.
Take a picture.
Thank you all. We're going to keep Victor up there because the next item is ID 1886, the Recognition of Young Artists and Authors Showcase Top Recipients. And Sister Cities Commissioner Victor Bello is at the podium to introduce our young artist. Victor.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. A little background, this is Issaquah's fourth annual Young Artists and Authors Showcase, and it's something we proudly conduct in partnership with Sister Cities International. Each year brings a new global theme, and this year's Friendship, the heartbeat of global peace, truly resonated with our students. We were thrilled to see so many creative submissions in visual art, literature, poetry, and music, all expressing what global friendship means to our youth. We'd like to thank the mayor and city council for your continued support for the Sister Cities Commission and the youth engagement programs like this one. We'd also like to recognize our partnership with the Issaquah Arts Commission and extend our sincere gratitude to the Issaquah Library, not only for displaying this year's artwork, but also generously hosting this year's Jazz Recognition Workshop. Another heartfelt thank you goes to my fellow Sister City Commissioners and our staff liaison as everyone who helps make this program possible year after year. And finally, the biggest thank you is reserved to the Issaquah youth for your bravery, participating, your creativity, your willingness to share your voice with the world. We are proud of each of you in stepping up and expressing yourselves so proudly. So please welcome me in, please help me in welcoming Rishika Chin, I'm sorry, Chin Takindi for her outstanding classic art, Harmony in Unlikely Bonds. And I believe that her teacher, Neha, is accepting on her behalf.
Thank you so much for recognizing her, because she truly appreciates.
Thank you so much. And our next recipient, Jaycee Grant, for outstanding poetry for their submission, Fireflies.
Oh, Victor, thank you very much. Just in case you didn't know, Jaycee, the last recipient, is my neighbor and my friend. So I'm very proud of Jaycee. Fantastic. Okay, moving on. We are going to move into the next item of business, which is Audience Comments. And this is the time when members of the public may address the council in person or virtually. So those who signed up to make comments will be called on first. And if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you join by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. And if you're in the room and did not sign up, Council President will look for your hands at the end of the listed speakers and ask if there's anybody else that would like to speak before the close of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicate a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you so much. So for those making comments, you're invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please do direct your comments to the whole council, not individual council members. And while this isn't a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you're recognized, if you are a virtual attendee, unmute your microphone. If you're in the room, please step up to the lectern. It's centered in front of the council. Make sure that you press the button in the center to turn the microphone on. Please state your name and address or your relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond once we call your name or phone number or if you lose your connection, the meeting will still need to proceed, and we encourage you to rejoin the meeting if you're able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments written and verbal are a very important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously. We thank all of those who've come here tonight to address the council. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who's signed up to speak?
Yes, Kevin Nichols.
My name is Kevin Nichols, and I live at 352 Wilderness Peak Drive Northwest in Issaquah. I'm here to offer public comments on Agenda Bill 8988, which is the 2025 Title 18 Policy Amendments. Specifically, I want to voice strong support for the letter P, a specific letter P on page 31 in the Table of Permitted Uses that now permits bars and taverns in mixed-use residential neighborhoods outside of our urban villages, where they were already allowed. I live in Tallis, and I'm super excited about the new taproom that's set to open near my home. And now this amendment would extend that possibility to other mixed-use areas. We need these third spaces. These are neighborhood-scale gathering spots that enhance our whole community. As I once heard a wise man say, "If you want to build a walkable city, you need places to walk to." This letter P, tiny as it is, helps create more of those places. When I was a kid, growing up in a small town in Pennsylvania, every week after getting my allowance, I'd walk to Mrs. Derringer's Candy Store a few blocks from my house. Her shop was in a small addition on the side of her home. It didn't get a ton of customers. You had to ring and wait a bit to actually get in, but I'd spend about 50 cents, if memory serves correctly, every week on a pack of Nerds. No surprise there, I guess. This is a completely unremarkable story, except that Mrs. Derringer's Candy Store would be illegal to build in most of Issaquah today, and frankly, most cities. I was really encouraged to hear corner stores discussed at the last committee of the whole meeting, and I really appreciate the consideration that was given to beginning a public process around those types of uses. This single letter P is one of many baby steps in the set of Title 18 amendments towards more neighborhoods where people can live, work, and gather without getting in their cars. I'd love to see us create the kind of community I remember from being a kid and that our kids and frankly, all of us deserve to experience more of again. I urge you to support this amendment and continue working with the community to expand what's possible to walk to in Issaquah.
Thank you. City Clerk, has anybody else signed up for comments this evening?
Yes, Alex Zimmerman.
Alex, please come to the microphone.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it's working, yeah, good. Working? Yeah, thank you very much. Zihail, my dirty damn Nazi Gestapo fascist pig, mob bandito. My name, Alex Zimmerman, a president of Stand Up America. Last week, July 15, can country council make a decision what is very unique? Take all constitution, everything what is America have for 250 years in garbage.
Mr. Zimmerman, are you speaking to an agenda item this evening? Sorry for interrupting you.
No, no, it's okay. You can interrupt me, no problem. Half six thousand day of trespass. Yeah, no problem.
Which item are you speaking to?
This decision what is made in country reflect council, reflect all King County. Because right now, officially, I repeat this, officially, King County number one fascist county in America. Is this happen?
Mr. Zimmerman, excuse me, but you need to speak to an item on the city of Issaquah's agenda this evening. Do you have any comments on any of the items on the agenda?
No, this what is King County make decision reflect everybody, include in Issaquah, all two half million people, two and a half million people. I speak about this because people in Issaquah reflect by this decision. It's a fundamental decision.
Yes, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Zimmerman, but public comment tonight is going to be on programs, policies, and decisions that are before the council this evening. So if you could select something on the agenda to speak to, that would be great.
I understand this, but when this reflect everybody?
It has to be very specific.
Okay, how I can talk about fascism, what is King County did officially right now? You understand about talking, they put everything in garbage. This unique situation, you right now look absolutely identical.
Mr. Zimmerman, I'm going to have to ask you to focus on some item that is before our council this evening, otherwise could you just conclude your remarks?
Yes, okay. So how, when I can speak about people in Issaquah what is reflect this decision? When? Let me know.
It has to be something that is on the council's agenda. So please pick an item.
No, okay, no problem. I did something wrong. When I can speak about this, next meeting, I can speak about this. This reflect two and a half million people. Is this number one fascist county in America right now officially?
I don't disagree with you.
No, 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 answer me. When I can talk. No, when I can talk.
It would be appropriate to do the public testimony in front of King County Council who makes the decision.
No, let me know.
At a King County Council meeting.
Okay, no, right now, okay. When I can talk?
Yes.
Next meeting?
At a King County Council meeting.
This decision reflect two half million people, all King County.
But it is not part of the body of work of the city council here tonight, so please pick an agenda item, or we're going to have to ask you just to summarize and stop your public comments.
No, it's okay. It's okay. You write hundred percentage. When I can speak about this?
King County Council would be the appropriate place to speak about this item.
King County Council make decision what is reflect everybody. You can go and listen to them.
Mr. Zimmerman, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up because it's not related to the business of the council this evening, so please conclude your comments.
So I cannot speak about something that is reflect everybody in Issaquah?
That is not related to a program that the city of Issaquah council member is doing.
No problem, I understand you. When I can speak about this because it's very heavy degree of fascism. We right now number one fascist county in America. It's very serious problem, county. You understand word county?
I do not disagree with you, but you must spend your time talking about an item before the Issaquah City Council. Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. City Clerk, is there anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening?
Yes, we have a virtual caller who has dialed in by phone with the last two digits, 14. I'm going to make you a panelist now, and I've requested that you unmute as it's your turn to make comments. Mayor, I'm just giving this person a moment to unmute. Phone-in caller, I'm going to send you one more request to unmute.
Do we know what the number is? Is it like star three or?
To unmute? That's to raise your hand, which they already did. So now I need them to, so I think I prompt it, and then they, they're prompted on the phone. But let me see.
Council President, are you seeing others in the room that might also like to testify this evening?
Don't think I see anybody else who would make public comments in the audience.
Thanks. We'll give a few, we'll give a little bit longer for the online person, and then we'll close public comments.
Okay, and phone-in caller, I see you want to speak. Try pressing star six on your phone.
This is Steve Purera. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can. Steve, go ahead.
Welcome, Steve.
Good, thank you. Good to have you all on board. So I have a couple of thoughts I wanted to share with you and the public that may not be listening. I sent some public comments via email. I won't repeat those. Narrow my scope to just huddle 18 at this point. There are kind of few, but here we go. I'm not sure it's typically called out, but I have a chance to plug for what are called CST or culturally sensitive trees. They're trees that might be, have been created, marked, or revised by native peoples that are native to the area of Issaquah. It's not known for sure that there are any of these cultural-sensitive trees, but I believe they deserve not just heritage or marked status, but deserve legal protections. So I would urge you to do more to provide such CST protections for those trees in our legal and city code framework. Next one I had to do is maybe more than I wanted to know what the adult entertainment section of the code, I know there used to be a hotel in the East Gate area, Bellevue up the road on 90 that went to ruins by the hour. I know there's a section in the code that talks about adult hotels in our code, and much it was revised to not include adult entertainment hotels that rent out rooms for less than a set period of time. Thirdly, I guess sometimes someone, I find myself opposed to the idea of deviations or exemptions being allowed. It seems like you divide or provide the code for whatever the standard or norm should be, and you set the expectation that that will be followed, not grant deviations. The one that I typically find most onerous is granting deviations for suicide or forced suicide development. to suicide development. These supposedly should be removed to limit development in the suicide of the forested protected areas. Lastly, I'll just add in conjunction with the last caller, talking about what's allowed to speak before the public. Comment sections should be included to be a little more allowable of flexible agenda items. This is kind of the place I think the public comes together, will provide public input on things that impact all of us, not just on specific agenda items. So I think there should be more flexibility to allow people to provide a different perspective or different view that may or may not be shared by other members of the public. That's what public, community and dialogue and democracy is involved, engaging all of us in speaking. Thanks for your time, I will stop talking tonight at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Council member and city clerk, or council president and city clerk, are there any others that are indicating and desire to speak this evening? I'm seeing a head shake now from the council president. I would like to thank everybody who came to speak this evening. We heard some comments about the code update that includes amenities within existing mixed-use neighborhoods. We heard concerns about culturally significant trees being mentioned, referenced, included in the code, and also opposition to deviations and exceptions to the code. Additional comments we heard tonight were on public comment, being broader than just those items related to city business. So thank you all for sharing that, we appreciate that you took the time to join your city council this evening. As a reminder, you can always submit comments to your council at any time at citycouncil@isaguatwa.gov. So the next item of business we're gonna move on to is the consent calendar, and I do not have any remarks on the consent calendar, but council president, are there any committee chairs or chair judges in the room who would like to report on any consent calendar items?
We do have, starting out with council member Hall.
Thank you, yeah, I do. Tonight's consent calendar includes Agenda Bill 909, or 39, which the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee considered at our July 8 meeting. And since we haven't had a council meeting between then and now for me to give an update, I wanted to make sure to share that item. It details changes to our impacted mitigation fee schedules to comply with new state requirements. It was Senate Bill 5258, which says now that impact fees must reflect proportionate impact of new housing types, the idea being that smaller units should have proportionally lower impact. And so this update bases our rates on square footage, and the intent is to help incentivize broader range of housing types, smaller types in particular. Did wanna mention that we're still waiting on final guidance from Commerce, I think still, yes. And the committee was interested in kind of a follow-up as we learn more from that, and what other cities do. In particular, this proposal has certain minimum and maximum rates beyond and below certain square footages, which we thought made sense for now, but wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to check ourselves in the future. Otherwise, the committee agreed with the administration and recommends adoption. Thanks.
And council?
Council president? Yeah, council member Joe, did you have something? No, okay, then I think we are done.
Thank you very much. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if it is authorized this evening, the items on the consent calendar will be distributed together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you so much. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Council president, let me know if you see any indication.
There is none.
Awesome, then, would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I move we approve the consent calendar as distributed.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously, 7-0, and we are gonna move on to our public hearing portion of the meeting. AB 9035, vacation of a portion of the 12th Avenue Northwest, and we're gonna have Transportation Engineering Manager John Mortenson to present this item. Welcome, John.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members, I'm John Mortenson, Transportation Engineering Manager. Give me a minute, and I will share my screen. Tonight, I'm here to give you a brief presentation on vacation of street right-of-way along 12th The purpose of tonight's item is to conduct a public hearing for a street vacation of a portion of 12th Avenue Northwest. Some background on this, this is at the former City Hall Northwest property that the city recently sold, located at 1775 12th Avenue Northwest, and a unique situation where a portion of the public right-of-way jutted into the parking lot, which wasn't a problem back when the city owned the building. But now that the city has sold it, we are going through a vacation process for that portion of the right-of-way, and so that way the new owner of the property can have an unencumbered use of the property, and the city has no plans for this portion of the right-of-way for the future improvements. And the proposal that the administration has is to vacate a portion of 12th Avenue Northwest, and tonight, the next step in the process is to conduct a public hearing with a proposed ordinance on August 11. And this is a visual exhibit that shows where the portion of right-of-way that would be vacated is located at. So this is City Hall Northwest in, or I guess former City Hall Northwest located in North Isaguat. For reference, it's near Lowe's, across the street from Lowe's, near PCC and Michaels. And you can see on this exhibit where a portion of the right-of-way is just right where the parking lot is for the building, and that's in blue. The options that the council has are to not approve the vacation, as opposed to the recommendation, which is to approve it. And some of the impacts to that option are that the city would need to continue to execute encroachment agreements with the buyer to mitigate the encroachment issues, they can continue to use the parking lot. As such, staff would expend staff time in preparation and execution of agreements, and the city would need to continue to own and maintain the right-of-way that it does not have a use for if the council did not vacate this portion of right-of-way. The recommendation from the administration is to conduct a public hearing regarding the right-of-way vacation of a portion of 12th Avenue Northwest, and following the public hearing, the plan is to return to the council on August 11. And the recommendation is on the consent calendar, but I do wanna confirm that the council would want that on consent or regular business. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, John. So again, I'm gonna be opening the public hearing at 7:39, and if you're joining us virtually and you would like to make some comments, I would encourage you to raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you're joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. If you're in the room and do not sign up, I will ask council president to recognize you as other speakers before we close this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak to this item?
No, and I'm not seeing anyone indicate a desire to speak virtually, nor in the room.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any objection to closing the public hearing? And that is an objection from council.
I'm not seeing any.
Thank you. Hearing none, the public hearing is closed at 7:40 PM. Council, do you have any questions? And again, I'll ask council president to moderate in the room.
This seems to be pretty straightforward, seeing no questions here.
Thank you. This item will return to the city council at the August 11 city council meeting for action. Can you verify if council has any preference on whether they would like to see this item returned under consent or regular business?
I have heard a few whispers of consent, so that seems to be where we're going.
Thank you, council president. And thank you, John. So we're gonna move on to regular business, which is AB 8988. This is the 2025 Title 18 policy amendments, and the ask before the council this evening is to adopt the ordinance. I'd like to, ordinances, I'd like to invite Acting Planning Manager Kristen Lee Son to present this item. Welcome, Kristen.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna open up my PowerPoint. Share that. All right. Good evening. Thank you for your patience. Yes, tonight, we are asking the council to approve several ordinances adopting minor state-required and policy amendments to the Title 18 Land Use Code. So we are doing this because it's all about quality control. As you know, back in 2023, we updated our entire land use code, and we combined several documents. In doing that, there are bound to be some mistakes or things that we find as we're implementing the code that we can do better. So as we are just keeping a running list of things and coming back to you for amendments. We broke this round of amendments into three types. Minor amendments, which are really clarifying, and correction amendments, state-required amendments, and policy amendments. Some of the clarify, or, yes, minor amendments, the clarifying amendments are updating some administrative processes, clearing up home business, which require to permit a home business permit even though it is an allowed use by right. Additional height and step backs, I'll talk a little bit more about that one later. And we deleted an out-of-date parking table, and we added and omitted uses in the permitted uses table that were mixed up in the update, and added footnotes back in as guidelines as well. State-required amendments, the first one is House Bill 1042, which allows for the conversion of commercial and mixed-use buildings into multifamily residential properties within the existing structure without meeting all of the regulations that would typically be required of new development. Some of those things include not being required to add additional parking, and maybe not meet all the open space requirements that are in our code. Second one is House Bill 1998, which requires that we allow co-living housing in all zones that allow for, in all zones that allow for housing. They have to have at least six units or more. This includes mixed-use zones. So co-living housing is something like a single-room occupancy, where it's a house with one kitchen and several rooms that different people rent out. The last one is the Washington Administrative Code had numerous amendments put in place for particularly residential parking and electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Our policy amendments, we had wayfinding. We had, we required wayfinding, but we didn't have any standards for our wayfinding, so no one knew what to do, so we put standards in there. We had our, essentially, the heat pump mechanical equipment, rooster and chicken husbandry, and bees and beekeeping were all updated because those codes were based on a much more rural environment than we have here in the city, so we've just made those a little bit more rural, or urban-friendly. And the last one is common and private amenity space, and again, I'll talk to that in just a moment. So going back to the additional height and step backs, the issue is that it was confusing, and it was misinterpreted from the old code to the new code. The new code, the regulations for adding additional height, and in the menu of things that you needed to do to be able to go higher above the base height, excuse me, were applied citywide. But in the old code, they weren't supposed to apply citywide, they were only supposed to apply outside of central Isaguat and outside of the urban villages. So we are taking those conditions, and the old code, new code, changing it back to the old code. We also made some corrections, such as one was misstated in saying that you, these are the standards for going 65 feet above the base height. Well, we don't allow things that high, so 65 feet was supposed to be the maximum height. So we made a few of those little tweaks as well. The last one was amenity space. We have heard from some developers that it is difficult to feasibly provide the outdoor space that is required for each unit in, for each unit in multifamily developments. So we currently require outdoor amenity space of 100 square feet per unit. We also require private amenity space of 48 square feet per unit. This could be on-ground patio, this could be a garden outside your unit, this could be a balcony, but it's an additional 48 square feet per unit. What we are proposing is that if you can show that you can't feasibly do this, it's just too expensive, then 50% of your units only have to have the 48 space, 48 square feet attached to the unit. They still have to do the 100 square feet. However, 50% of the units, you still need to provide 148 square feet of amenity space, but it can be all in the common spaces instead. So that provides a deviation for some developers. So this was reviewed at the June 10 PDE Planning, Development, and Environment Committee meeting. The committee recommended unanimously to approve the amendments as they were presented. However, they did discuss a preference to have a deeper, broader policy conversation regarding regulations such as the step backs and amenity space because of comments that we have received from developers. So if adopted, the amendments would become effective five days after publication. The administration recommends approval of the ordinances adopting minor state-required and policy amendments to Title 18 Land Use Code as presented, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kristen. Council member Hall, as Chair of the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee, would you like to summarize the committee's recommendation on this item?
I sure would, thank you, Mayor Polly. Well, you are absolutely right, Kristen. The committee agreed with PPC and staff recommendations around those three bucket of, buckets of amendments, the minor amendments, the state-required amendments, and the policy amendments. And then, thank you for kind of previewing this next bit, too, and I know City Administrator Bob Kowitz has previewed this with the council several times now, but beyond this suite of amendments that we hope to pass tonight, and that we're supportive of as a committee, this meeting, the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee, and then, of course, the meeting that we had with King County Housing Authority around the TOD discussions, kind of kick-started a list of policy issues that we'd be interested in discussing as a committee and at full council, wanting to discuss other potential barriers to housing development here in town. We might like to see go through this same amendment process in the future, especially because they've been highlighted by two developers in town or identified by council members during various discussions. So I said in previous council meetings that I'd report out on that list, so that list so far includes step backs, outdoor amenity space, commercial space height, transparency, and allowing a menu of certification options instead of just lead only. And then, of course, we also have a lengthy Title 18 whiteboard list that we've been discussing for a few years now. We also recognize as the committee that CPD, Community Planning and Development, has a full work plan already and limited staff capacity. So we wanted to have an initial discussion with the council and ask this question. So there's kind of two things that we'd like your feedback tonight. First, do you agree with our recommendation and PPC's recommendation and staff's recommendation to move forward with these amendments? And then, the second question is, does council wanna go through this kind of prioritization, trade-offs, timeframes exercise with our current CPD work plan and some of the other policy items that we'd like considered? And if so, the administration will work to place a discussion on the calendar to, one, walk us through the current work plan, including what we're still required to do to come to compliance with other new state requirements, give us a sense of what additional work would look like with regard to staff capacity, board and commission review, committee review, community engagement, et cetera, and then give us that space up here to prioritize what's most important to us, to community, and have that trade-off conversation. So we're just looking for, in addition to what administration is requesting in terms of feedback, we're more broadly also looking for kind of a thumbs up, thumbs down feedback from the rest of the council on whether you would like to have a deeper discussion about some of the other policy items that we have been kind of flirting with as a council that could potentially help break down barriers to housing development, studying those, and prioritizing between what's already on our plate and what could be on our plate. So, oh, and then also, I guess if you have any feedback on whether that should be a COW discussion for the full council, or if you would like Planning, Development, and Environment Committee to start that conversation. And those are the only other comments I have as Chair.
Great summary, thank you, council member Hall. I'm gonna turn it over to council president again to go through any questions that the council may have right now.
Are there any questions? I am not seeing any questions.
Thank you very much, council president. Then what I- Then what I would be looking for is a motion, if there's someone who's prepared to make a motion.
Yes. I move to approve ordinance numbers.
3097 through 3110.
Adopting minor, state-required, and policy amendments to Title 18 Land Use Code as presented.
Second.
Thank you very much for that. Again, I'll turn it over to Council President. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this motion?
Deputy Council President?
Thank you. So, yes, I am supporting the adoption tonight of the amendments and really appreciate the work that's gone into that. I also want to thank the PDE Committee for bringing up the broader issue. And I would support a deeper discussion of the things as, as was stated, that we've been flirting with for some time now. And I would, I think a COW meeting would be the place where we will get the deepest conversation, and I think that's what we need. So, yes, yes to tonight's action and appreciation for the commentary and suggestion that we do a deeper dive. Thank you.
Any other comments on here? I will just throw in that I am also appreciative of these changes. I think the conversation at PDE went very well, where we were like, yes, we want these things, but also, what about that future updates list? And what about the things we've been talking about? So I appreciate that that has continued to come up from council. Looking at our planning calendar, we do have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled September 8th, which is currently prioritization of future Title 18 amendments. So it sounds like the administration has heard that request over and over and over again and has scheduled something out. So I believe we are probably good on that area. So I'm not seeing any other group. Oh, I am. Councilmember Jay.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, emphasize what everyone's saying about, you know, figuring out what other areas of the code have come up based on recent discussions and thinking about how we can address those, getting input from the community, whether that be, you know, PPC, community members, home builders who work in the community of Issaquah. And also, one thing that I would like to add to the list that you proposed, Councilmember Hall, was the potential, you know, allowing more use types in different zones, you know, as our public commenter mentioned, and as we talked about in the last committee of the whole meeting. That's something that I think could be really interesting for us to explore, to provide more third spaces and, you know, small stores throughout Issaquah. So, yeah.
Council President, is there anyone else indicating a desire to speak?
I'm checking once and twice and not seeing any.
That's great. City Clerk, can I just get the ordinance numbers again? What I wrote down doesn't actually make sense, so I think I'd like you to tell me what they are again before I read the motion.
Sure. There are 14 ordinances. The first number is 3097, and the last number is 3110.
Okay. Great. I hit 30,000. Definitely not the right number. Okay, so let's get back to reading the motion that the council will be voting on. So if there is no further discussion, the motion before council tonight is to adopt ordinances number 3097 through 3110, adopting minor and state required, Title 18 Land Use Code as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes unanimously, 7-0. We're going to move on to the next item of business, which is AB 9026. This is the Wash Dot Transfer of Development Rights Development Agreement Extension for Bellevue College. And the action before council this evening is to approve the resolution. I'd like to invite Community Planning and Development Director Minnie Dollywell to present this item, and welcome, Minnie.
Good evening, Mayor Polly, and members of the council, and community members who are here tonight. So I'm going to quickly share my screen. Great. So tonight, with me, we have Jorge from Bellevue College, Vice President. He'll be here to address some of the questions that came up during the committee meeting, as well as to answer any questions the council might have. So this item, let's see. So Bellevue College Development Agreement is actually incorporated as part of the larger Wash Dot Development Agreement. The council in 2011 approved it. It includes a transfer of development rights, where, you know, the development was not allowed on 144 acres, and that land, that development rights were transferred over to these four parcels. And so here's a little map. So there are about 101 acres, which were called Park Point, close to Issaquah High School, as well as 43 acres close to the current location of the Bellevue College parcel. And here's a map of those three parcels that are close to Bellevue College. Parcel 1, 2, and 3 were developed with about 80, 39, and one parcel, one unit. I'd say, I think it's in your agenda packet how many units on each of these lots were put on. And then about 19 acres, a little over 19 acres is this parcel called Parcel 4, or Bellevue College Parcel, that we're talking about tonight. It, it's in the Highlands neighborhood, with a goal at the time was to develop a satellite campus. The council at the time approved the master site development plan through a Resolution 2010-22. That's included as a link in your agenda bill, and envisioned a phased construction of multiple academic buildings. However, over the past decade, shifting enrollment trends, increased online learning, and the high cost of developing a standalone campus have led the college to reconsider what they'd like to do at this location. Apologize, something didn't go right. So the entitlements, I'm going to leave it in this, is it big enough for everyone to see? I don't know if, and I go to slideshow, it just reverts back for some reason. So under the current existing development agreement, it allows 372,000 square feet of institutional use or 310 equivalent residential units. So there's this concept of ERUs in the development agreement that comes up. It's based off of how much water usage and how much sewer capacity and things of that nature will occur. But there's a separate appendix that actually establishes the density of this parcel to range between 3 to 12 units. So if you calculate for your 19-acre lot, it comes to roughly about 228 residential units. And, and when you look at those three parcels, you know, even though the density was, or the ERUs were larger, but the actual development density was lower. So just so not, there's no confusion about what, two different numbers there. So the proposed amendments are to extend the, this development agreement for two years. And in addition, as part of the resolution, what you see, Bellevue College acknowledges that they'll, any development on this property, they're agreeing to comply with the applicable environmental critical areas, stormwater, and tree preservation requirements in effect at the time of development. So why is this an extension needed? What Bellevue College anticipates that they'll need two years to seek community input, come up with a viable plan for the city to review, and subsequently, the city may, you know, once that's figured out with the community feedback and council, the mechanism to adopt that could be updating our zoning or amending the terms of the development agreement for future development. I should also note that this development agreement has a provision for institutional uses to, you know, the development agreement would apply without any additional city council approval till 2044. So, so if council does not extend, provide the extension for two years, what will hap, what can happen on the property is just the institutional uses, no housing would be permitted. There is no underlying zoning established for this property, even though we say UV, or, you know, zoning, it's still defat, it goes back to the development agreement. So whatever is allowed under the development agreement is what would be permitted. And at the Planning Development and Environment Committee on July 8th, there was good discussion. The committee agreed to forward it to city council for consideration. And other feedback that was shared at that meeting included ensure that public benefits from development of this property are taken into consideration. There was an interest in partnering with Bellevue College to gather community input. There was also interest in soliciting input from Issaquah School District. If developing residential housing, there was discussion around pre-existing trails to be maintained and have access points, that emergency evacuation times are considered or mitigated if possible during the development scenarios exploration. There was also interest in understanding market rate versus affordable housing options in the Bellevue College proposal. So the development agreement, the way it's written right now, does include at least 50 units for all three, four parcels need to be affordable housing units. The recommendation that administration has for, on this item, is to approve this resolution, authorizing the mayor to, to approve an amendment to the Wash Dot TDR Development Agreement, extending the expiration date to allow Bellevue College to evaluate development options and seek community input. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions, and I'd like to introduce Jorge for a follow-up from PDE meeting.
Thank you. Director Dollywell, did you want Jorge to speak now before I go to Councilmember Hall?
We also have a question on the dais from Councilmember Marks.
Okay, Councilmember Marks.
Director Dollywell, I had a couple of questions. I wasn't sure exactly what you meant on a couple of things. One was around, what happens if we don't extend this development agreement? I wasn't sure I understood what the rates would be without the DA in place.
Sure. So the council action is needed to extend allowance for housing to be built on this property. No council action is needed until 2044 to allow institutional uses to continue on this property. So that's what would happen if the council chooses not to extend it, that the, the development agreement for an institutional use would be the, the only governing document or rules and regulations for this particular property. Because there's no zoning that has separate uses allowed or density, or development standards adopted for, for any of this, any of the areas in the city that are under the development agreements.
And then you said something about house, affordable housing on the parcels, but the other three parcels have all been built, right?
Correct.
And did they have affordable housing on them?
I need to research that more thoroughly. I couldn't gather that information quickly to see if the 50 required units were built on those lots. My understanding is not, but I need to take a deeper understanding of if there are any recorded covenants, because if they are built, then they would be recorded covenants for affordable housing. They do not show up on our affordable units map, for instance.
So if, so if they did not, if, if in fact, that none of those were affordable housing units, and you said there were 300-ish housing units in the development agreement?
Sure.
So how many of those would have to be affordable?
If none of them have been built at, at this time, then the development agreement expects at least 50.
Five zero, out of approximately 300.
Yes.
And affordable to what standard?
80% EMI, is my understanding.
Thank you.
Council President, is there any other questions, or can we move on to Jorge's presentation?
Yeah, I'm not seeing any other questions at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Polly and council members. I don't have a presentation, just have some comments. When I met with the Planning Development Environmental Committee, some questions and concerns were raised. That was on July 18th. It was a learning experience for me, and I'd like to address some of these concerns. First, I understand that there was a concern that the college was, sold this land at a reduced price with the understanding that it would be used for public benefit. At that time, it was a satellite campus. That was indeed the original purpose, and I want to acknowledge that. But a lot has changed since 2011. When that campus vision was created, we had a different environment. Since then, higher education has shifted, remote and hybrid instruction are now permanent, and since the pandemic, enrollment has declined, with that trend expecting to continue. We call it the enrollment cliff. And I apologize, I got the worst allergies today. And at the same, at the same time, construction costs have increased significantly. So it's just unrealistic to build a second campus right now. Second, there were questions about whether future development would comply with current city codes and environmental regulations. I want to be clear that Bellevue College is committed to meeting all these standards. I understand stormwater and wetlands and environmental concerns and trees and all that. When, when we do construction on our campus, we are proud to recently have been certified as a SAM and SAFE institution, and we construct all new buildings at LEED standards. I also understand there were concerns about the Emerald Initiative Report. And that report focuses on the financial value of the development lease of the Issaquah Highlands property. And that's what their job is, they're developers. But we are not developers. No one at the college is going to benefit personally with this. We are public servants and state employees. However, that being said, with declining enrollments combined with state budget cuts, which continue all the time, our funding has decreased. So we are certainly looking for other revenue streams so we can continue to serve students in our community, including Issaquah. This is why we are requesting a two-year extension to give us time to carefully assess our options. And I'll turn my page. And this time, we'll allow the college to consult with experts, continue with collaboration with the city and our community, and return with development options. This is one thing I learned, I'm not going to just come with one option and take it or leave it. I'm going to come with some options for your consideration. And I understand fully that granting this extension does not mean approval of any project in the future. This simply gives us time to plan thoughtfully and responsibly. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to turn it back over to Councilmember Hall, Chair of the Planning Development Environment Committee. And do you want to summarize the committee's recommendations on this item?
Sure. Lots of summaries from Zach tonight. So, yeah, we had a long conversa, well, first of all, thank you for the summary and the presentation, and then for being here, of course, and speaking to some of our concerns from the committee. Yeah, we had a long conversation on this one at committee, and there was a desire for me to speak to the comments that came up because there was some concern from a majority of members. So that way, then, the council could have kind of a full conversation about this. And some of this just now has been identified by either Director Dollywell or the VP from, from Bellevue College. So apologies for repeating anything if I do. But I do want to just start with some of the things that we agreed on in committee, which was, none of us were opposed to seeing housing on the parcel. Bellevue College provides an important service to the community. We were glad to see interest in community input process that they wanted to, to do within the Issaquah community. There was an agreement around a desire to see collaboration with the school district. This paved trail near the parcel came up as a concern, too, and we were in agreement that we wanted to ensure that that was maintained. And then also would be interested, as was said during the present And then also would be interested, as was said during the presentation, that Bellevue College explore a range of different housing types, including affordable housing. Some of the concerns that were included in remarks were the original intent of the DA of being around public and institutional use with clear public benefit, especially because, like was said, the sale price was lower than the market rate at the time. Concern with the concept of maximizing revenue with market rate housing, that might not necessarily be aligned with that same public benefit. Some hesitancy to extend DA's in general because they can allow for older versions of code to be used. And acknowledgement that the state surpressing process has specific requirements around use that make it challenging to surplus. I think it has to be, does it have to be used for affordable housing in the surpressing? Or there's a really strict parameter set for what it can be used for?
Yeah, on the affordable housing, you know, Kristen has confirmed, none of those three parcels that I was showing have any affordable units on it. However, in the development agreement, it talks about a parcel D, which the city had a separate development agreement with Westridge, where we swapped some land. So parcel D was, you know, has been now built with 10 market rate units. And in exchange, the Westridge development got the block for housing development. So there was some trade-in, trading of some of these provisions happened as a part of a separate development agreement. So it gets complex, I apologize. But for now, it seems like the idea was that parcel D was going to get 50 units. But then the city sold parcel D for market rate in exchange for getting affordable units in Westridge development.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing.
So they may have met their obligation for affordable housing, but through this other development agreement that the city did.
Okay. So beyond that, the only other concerns that were brought up were concerns that we'd be setting ourselves up for another extension in two years after the planning process. And then just general concern that a DA might not be the right tool versus just changing the underlying zoning. But supportive, supportive comments included that market rate housing, and you heard this today too, market rate housing could help Bellevue College create consistent revenue stream to help keep the lights on, support ongoing educational programming that benefits Issaquah students at all levels. That a two-year extension was a relatively modest measure to allow for additional planning, which would inform future updates to the DA in a vetted proposal for council to review and vote up or down in the future. And then also toward the end of the meeting, we acknowledged, or there were comments too, around how this comes with existing investments already in infrastructure, green space, impact fees at the time of the DA. So that's just a quick summary of some of the comments that came up from committee. I do just want to quickly go to the other members of my committee. If there's anything that you thought I missed or summarized poorly, I'm human, sometimes I do that, so.
You summarized great, but the only addition I would add was I had a comment around the emergency evacuation times because that area on College Drive is the kind of second access point down the Highlands. And so I wanted to see if there was an opportunity to investigate any other ways to speed up evacuation since the Highlands has the longest evacuation times in the city.
Council President, is there any other council members or committee members that are wanting to add to your comments?
Yes, Councilmember Zhang.
Yeah, thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Hall, for the summary. I just wanted to underscore the fact that we did sell this land at a significantly reduced price by about $5 million in 2011. And so it's essentially like, I understand that Bellevue College is a public agency, you know, they, their programs benefit the public. But it's essentially like, is, we're using Issaquah taxpayer dollars to subsidize this. And I really want to make sure that we're doing right by our community and making sure that, and whatever subsidy we're giving them, you know, through this land, through the fact that because it's a state agency that owns the land, the taxable value is zero. If they're building market rate housing, we're not going to be getting property taxes from the long term for market rate housing. And that's something that I think we really need to, we really need to think about when we're thinking about what type of developments we allow on this property. Because I think that's, it's kind of like, you know, I think in Issaquah, we've had, there's a lot of these types of things where, you know, we've done these things over the years with this idea of, oh yeah, we're going to give someone, you know, these incentives to do something that will benefit the community. And then when it comes back later, it's like, oh, well, we can't do what we originally planned. Can we do this other thing? I just really want to make sure that we're intentional about, you know, whatever we do at the end of the day being something that ultimately benefits the community. And again, I'm not opposed to market rate housing by any means. But then, you know, if it was any other market rate developer coming in, we would want them to pay market price for the land and also pay property taxes moving forward. So that's, that's kind of my approach. I'm not really opposed to extending the development agreement because again, I think it kind of, you know, gives us some more time to like continue the discussion and think about different options. But again, you know, I do think we need to be really intentional about what we do here.
Great comment. Is there any other microphones up, Council President?
Yeah, I was just looking around. I am not seeing any at this. I'm, are we moving on to questions? Or are we still seeing if there's anything? I think that was committee.
Oh.
Yep. So are you looking for questions at this time?
Yes, please.
Okay, starting with Deputy Council President De Michelle.
Yes, Councilmember Zhang raised a question that I do not understand. There would be no property taxes on these houses if they're built? I, I am not understanding why there wouldn't be.
Well, I think there's an RCW, if the entity owned as Bellevue College. Currently, there are no taxes being paid, just like the city-owned properties don't pay taxes. So in terms of how the lease is set up with, you know, whatever legal mechanism Bellevue College has with a potential partner who may develop housing, but the idea for Bellevue College, I can let Jorge speak to that, is that they would not sell the land, but lease the land. So it's my understanding, Rachel, that even for leased land, if it's owned by a public entity, there are no taxes, right?
There are no property taxes paid, but there is likely leasehold excise tax in place, unless there's an exemption for it, which there may be for what Bellevue College has planned, but I haven't looked into that.
Questions, Councilmember Marts, did you have a question? No, any other questions? Councilmember Ray.
Thanks, I just want to clarify, and I think many of you spoke to this earlier, or maybe Jorge did, but the two-year extension is an extension for planning purposes. It doesn't commit us to anything. It doesn't lock anything down. It's, it's just basically running the clock for another two years for a future decision.
That's what Bellevue College intends or plans to do. And, you know, in the next two years, if someone wants to develop it, the city would have to take in their application. But the chances of them finding, you know, they're not planning to do that. Their, their request is to get two years so they can plan for what they want to do. But from a legal perspective, if that's your question, it would be allowing housing development by doing this extension. With a commitment to comply with, you know, latest stormwater regulations and, and critical area code and all that. But other terms of the development agreement would apply.
And if we don't extend?
Then the only thing with that would be allowed would be institutional uses.
Great, thanks.
Are there any additional questions in the room, Council President?
Yeah, I have a question. Right now, development is only allowed as housing because we have a development agreement. But we could change the zoning on the parcel, and Bellevue College would still be the owner of the property. They would just end up complying with whatever code and zoning we would allow if we just did decide to make that change outside of a DA, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, it would probably need a comprehensive plan change because of designation, and then the zoning and relevant development standards.
Council President, are there any additional questions in the room?
I'm not seeing any additional questions.
Well, thank you very much. I think this is one of the deepest committee dives I've ever seen into a historical issue where what the community had hoped the council would achieve in 2011 is kind of a different place where we are today. And Issaquah Highlands is designed with infrastructure for up to 3,500 housing units, and we're at 5,000. And so there are so many more questions to be discussed. But I just think this was a very great summary from Committee Chair Hall. And I appreciate Councilmember Zhang's comments as well, is that there's just a lot to think about here. So great, great conversation. At this point in time, would anyone care to make a motion?
Yes, I just have to get back to it. I move to approve Resolution Number 2025 dash 15, authorizing the mayor to approve an amendment to the Washita TDR Development Agreement, extending the expiration date to allow Bellevue College to evaluate development options and seek community input.
Second.
Your second. Oh, thank you. Council discussion. And again, Council President, if you could just monitor the microphones in the room, that'd be great.
Let's start, Councilmember Marts.
I'm going to oppose this motion this evening. 14 years ago was in President Obama's first term, Affordable Care Act had been approved, but was still three years from enactment. We took our oldest to Disneyland for her 13th birthday. She has her master's degree now and is getting married next spring. It's a long time ago, but I was here on council 14 years ago, and I know what our vision was for that property and what our hopes and our aspirations were. And I know all the conversations that have happened in the intervening years and things that we as a city have hoped might be done with that parcel that would benefit the community. And exactly zero of it has come to pass, except for, surprise, surprise, more housing getting built. That community is bursting at the seams with housing. I have zero interest in seeing more housing get put in to provide funding for educational facilities in Bellevue that, yes, while they benefit our community, create more infrastructure demands and more services demands in an area that is just completely filled to the, to overstuffing with housing that's already up there. So I am not interested, 14 years is more than enough time to come up with something exciting to do with that parcel. Time is up. The things that we hoped for as a council, that I voted for 14 years ago, have not happened. And now is the time to think hard about how that property might get used and be careful that our goodwill and our, you know, below-market pricing that we gave to Bellevue College is not used as a cash cow to benefit other communities. So I'm very much opposed to this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. Council President, anyone else in the room?
Yes, Councilmember Hall.
I feel the exact opposite. I'm very supportive of this motion, although I recognize and acknowledge everything that's been said. This to me seems more like a, just a technical, easy vote for me in terms of letting them do some more planning. This gives us an opportunity in two years to look at a proposal that's been fully vetted out, to look at a proposal that modifies the DA to meet needs of Bellevue College and the needs of the council and community. And honestly, what did you say? There are tons of leadership transitions at Bellevue College over the years. Like, I think we should give them a little bit of a break. Like, the times that we live in right now are very difficult for public institutions. And this is an opportunity for us to help one that provides an incredible resource, not only to running start students at Issaquah Schools, high school students here in Issaquah, but also people who are advancing their own education beyond high school in the Issaquah area. And because we have so much benefit from, from that institution, I think that we should do what we can to help them. And right now, the vote today to help them is just to give them more time to plan. That's it. So I'm going to be supporting this motion. And again, I just want to remind council members that this development agreement has come with existing improvements in infrastructure, in existing improvements to green space here in Issaquah and impact fees at the time of the development agreement. And I'm going to be supporting this motion tonight. Thanks.
Deputy Councilmember Hall?
De Michelle.
Thank you. We always hear that government should be nimble. And what does nimble mean? It means responding to the circumstances that are in front of us rather than the circumstances of the past. I listened to the, the meeting, and I heard Jorge's explanation of why it has taken so long for this to happen. And it made a lot of sense to me. A lot of leadership changes, pandemic, declines in enrollment, and all of those put together, high construction costs. And we have been in kind of a perfect storm of larger institutions really having to rethink many of the things that they are doing. We are being asked to allow them to plan. We're not being asked to approve anything right now tonight other than a two-year extension, that they will come back to us with a vetted plan. And I'm willing to wait. I also heard that evening, I heard a lot of willingness to listen to us, a lot of willingness to be adaptable to the things that we would like to see on that property. But I think that, that willingness and that partnership, we can go forward and see what will come back to us in a couple of years. So I will support the motion tonight.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Council President, any other microphones in the air?
Councilmember Ray.
This one's really hard for me because I am a little bit confused. Because Deputy Council President De Michelle just said, if we grant this extension, we also have the opportunity to approve a go-forward plan somewhere two years from now. And that doesn't seem quite aligned with what I heard Director Dollywell say earlier. I mean, if, is there a hard approval step before Bellevue College can take its next step on this parcel of land with the council?
Well, if, if they're going to come in with an actual development proposal, it will require city approval, not necessarily a development agreement piece of it. I think the way the, the resolution is written, it just extends the timeframe. You could amend the, the language in there if there's, if you're looking for some more specificity of what is really allowed in the next two years. But, but that's what, you know, Bellevue College wants to work with the city and is asked for additional time. And so it's a straight-out extension of the two-year term with the concessions from Bellevue College to comply with the regulations that, you know, are of concern to the city because the state requires us to, you know, meet those, stormwater being one of them, for instance.
And when you say approval by the city, is that a administrative approval? Or is that a legislative approval?
You know, the, the development agreement kind of goes through a whole appendix of land use approval. So I'll have to look at that to give, to really answer what that approval process will look like. Give me a second if I can quickly find it here. So there's a term called implementing approvals, means applications, land use approvals and titles and permits. So it doesn't really tell me much there, hang on.
Director Dollywell, but any change, future change to the development agreement, depending on what the plan is in two years, would require legislative approval, right?
Yes. Any amendments to the DA for standards, uses, types? Any of those things will require council approval, for sure.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Zhang.
Council Pres, oh, great, thank you.
So now I'm starting to get a little bit confused because based on everything else I've heard, you know, we've heard multiple times, oh, it just gives them more time to plan, and then maybe in two years, we'll re-amend the development agreement. But if we don't renew the development agreement now, does that preclude us from amending the development agreement in the future? Because what I've been hearing, or at least my personal opinion, is that I'm not thrilled with the current, you know, provisions in the development agreement. So if we're extending it just as a gesture of goodwill to say, oh, you can then, you know, plan, and maybe we'll change it in two years, versus know, plan and maybe we'll change it in two years versus, you know, if, if we decide actually we don't like what's in the development agreement, so maybe we should actually amend the development agreement and give them two years to act on that. So, yeah, I'm, basically, if we do this amendment, can they build based on the terms of the current development agreement within those two years, and then there's no other, like, touchpoints with us? Which I think was also kind of what Councilmember Ray was asking.
Yeah, so theoretically, yes. But the development, the terms of the development agreement that they have voluntarily agreed to comply with the latest ones are listed in that, which I kind of talked about, the Stormwater and the critical areas and those kind of things. But the density, how many units they can build, how much height, what setbacks, all of those things are what's, what could be built per the standards that are in the development agreement in the next two years. So, for them to come in with an actual building permit within the next two years. So, you know, that, that's where I think you're, you're wanting if that, that can happen. I think Bellevue College is saying they don't plan to turn in a construction-level proposal at this time. It just gives them a little bit of an ability to say, council's direction to allow housing is okay, gives them the green light to talk to developers to, that they have, they have potential entitlements for residential, basically.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, actually, I have a follow-up question based on what you were just saying, Director Dollywall. So, my question was going to be, if, if, if the council did choose to let this part of the development agreement lapse, so residential is not something that's allowable on the parcel, how challenging would it then be to plan for residential, going to financiers, having firms come in to put plans together? And I mean, is there some assumption that you need to have that kind of underlying allowance first to be able to move into this?
Absolutely. I think most developers, if they know they are not entitled to do residential, probably won't be interested in spending their time talking to them. Yeah. In terms of the approval of the land use as it is written, so, you know, at the, at the time, there was a commission, which is now disbanded, but it is replaced by Development Commission. It talks about, commission members appointed by the mayor and organized and managed by the designated official shall make the decisions on the site development permit for properties greater than three acres in size and make recommendations to the hearing examiner on preliminary plat and to city council or any major modifications associated with the development agreement. So, it's a decision by the commission. If there's anything that's going to get changed, then that has to come to council, is the way the process is written today.
Any other comments? Otherwise, I will make mine go for it. Councilmember Ray?
Thanks. This isn't, I, I came into this evening feeling very differently than I feel tonight about this, this particular resolution. I was very much aligned with what Councilmember Hall said, you know, this is, this is very administrative and we're just kind of giving more flexibility moving down. But the more I listen to this and I look at the situation, the less I am excited about it because the one thing that I believe the Highlands doesn't need right now is more housing. I think that they have taken far, far more than, than was envisioned. But what we do need is community space and community good, and I would really prefer to see this land, either by Bellevue College or some other entity, be developed in something that provides more of a community service than additional housing. So, I am inclined to not, at this moment, to not support the extension of the development agreement.
Okay. Councilmember Joe, any comments before I go in? Did you have your mic up again? Yeah. Okay. So, you know, my comments, I think similarly, I have a lot of conflicts about this. I don't like extending an existing development agreement. You know, if I, if I take Bellevue College out of this perspective and just think about from the sake of Issaquah and the concept of, do we want to build like it was 2011? Or do we want to recognize our newer codes and, you know, the additional need for affordable housing and other things like that? So, I have some concerns in that perspective. I also have concerns extending this when it sounds like there's a pretty big interest in evaluating what the code requirements are on this. And so, it does seem a little bit disingenuous to extend this with Bellevue College and have you invest money and time into a planning scenario and then want to change that in two years. Whether that is for additional housing or less housing or whatever that is, it seems like a difficult scenario to extend something for a two-year period with the idea that there is an interest to change it. The other thing I would say is this current development agreement does not expire until December 31st of this year. And so, hearing this much consternation on the dais, I do believe it may be a good idea to take a step back and table this so that we can maybe have some additional conversations because there have been a lot of questions brought up at this point. So, maybe.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Council President. That is a great, great summary. I think what we're going to do is bring back in Deputy City Administrator Snyder and also Director Dollywall to talk about how you might be able to have additional conversation, even if it's just additional information at a committee of the whole or something that would sort of relieve some of the anxiety that we're hearing tonight. And so, Deputy City Administrator, would you talk about what process might look like or why it is important that the council actually make this consideration this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Andrea Snyder. Yes, we can certainly, given the amount of discussion and questions this evening, we can certainly come back. What I would recommend is that we come back to a committee of the whole rather than going back to one of the subcommittees. And so, this way, the entire council can have this discussion together, have the ability to ask a few more questions, and also look at if there's conditions under which you would want to extend the agreement. Are there additional conditions you would want to apply to that agreement over the next two years? That's certainly within council's purview. So, we can take a look at what those options are, work with Bellevue College, and have a little bit more time for discussion and what perhaps some options are within the next two years.
So, I would ask Council President maybe to take a look around the room and see if there's an agreement and whether or not City Clerk Guser could provide a motion that would allow you to continue this to a cow at a date certain.
Okay, I'm seeing a good number of head nods and thumbs up and such. Looking at our calendar, you know, we don't have an August Committee of the Whole, so we'd likely be looking at that September 8th Committee of the Whole, which was when we were talking about prioritization of Title 18 amendments. Yeah, that would be a big, beefy meeting.
Also, say, Council President, City Clerk, do they have to deal with the motion? I believe. Has the motion been made? Yeah. So, if you could guide council on what the next steps would be in voting and consideration, that would be great.
Sure. So, the motion is pending. So, Mayor, one thing you could say is, is there any objection to referring the motion to the September Committee of the Whole? And if there's no objection, we'll just move the agenda bill to the September Committee of the Whole, just to note, when it does eventually come back to council, it will be pending in this form.
Great. So, is there any objection to moving this to the December Council's whole? And Council President, let me know if you see any raised microphones or signals that this is not going to be okay.
Are we okay with this? Shrugs, nods. Okay. Yeah. I think we are comfortable with that adjustment.
Thank you. So, City Clerk, I'm assuming that for this evening, this item is concluded, and we would be moving on to our agenda.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
So, Mayor Polly, is it, is it okay to ask a question about, in terms of coming back on September 8?
Oh, I'm sorry. Director, of course.
No, I just wanted to make sure we have, you know, guidance on what we're bringing back to full council. Is it the same agenda item or is there any specific things that council would like us to address?
Maybe we can do a go-around with the council members again for them to express either additional information or concerns that they have that might help you inform what information to bring back. Council President, would you like to work your way around the room?
Yeah. Councilmember Hall, then Councilmember Martz.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it sounds like there's some concern around building type and maybe what we could potentially do within the DA to encourage types of buildings over another. So, I was just wondering if maybe what could come back is, what are the tools at our disposal? How could we amend the DA, this go-around to help narrow? Like, what, what would those tools look like to add to the DA to narrow the kinds of things that could show up on the site? What kind of impact would that have? That seems to capture at least some of the feedback that I'm hearing tonight.
Councilmember Martz?
I mean, my concerns are primarily around housing, right? So, it's when we come back and talk, it's what's the landscape like for housing? What's allowed currently? What, you know, if, if Bellevue College came back and said, you know, we're looking to partner with Stanford University and bring a Stanford Northwest campus, you know, and we don't need any housing, then I'd be the first person in line to get on board. But when this comes back to the committee of the whole, I really want to understand what our exposure is for housing. This, when this development agreement put in, came in place, we weren't at 5,000 housing units up there, and we weren't at all the housing development west of, of Highlands Drive. So, you know, the world is a very different place up there than it is now, and that's where my, my concerns are primarily around. I, I would love, there's all sorts of, there's all sorts of other opportunities, and I don't want to bind Bellevue College's hands, but, boy, housing, we have fought so hard to try to keep, you know, that school from being overjammed and, you know, what to do with all the extra kids that we have up there. To make that problem worse seems a tragedy. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
And I really would like to, when we come back, to understand the tax, property tax implications of this in some nauseous detail because I think it is significant. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Chang?
Yeah, I'd also definitely like to understand the leasehold excise tax versus property tax implications for the city of Issaquah. I think also, to Councilmember Martz's point, I'm curious if, you know, would there be other higher educational institutions, perhaps like a technical college, that, you know, could also potentially be interested in institutional use? Just because I think, you know, if the vision for the community is that we would love to have an institutional use, not if we don't extend the development agreement, you know, they're still able to build an institutional use through 2044. And so, I think, and the other thing with institutional uses, as we've seen with the recent issues with the school bonds, is that there are not that many parcels out there in Issaquah within the urban growth area that are large enough to build an institutional use. And so, to give that up, I think, is, would be a huge loss for us. So, I'd like to look more into, you know, Issaquah School District, other higher educational institutions as well.
Anyone else? Councilmember Hall?
Well, and to that point, I mean, that's something that's been brought up by committee here, like the school district, other institutional uses. I mean, at the end of the day, they own, like, this property is owned by Bellevue College, right? So, what are the tools that are at disposal to encourage partnership between the Issaquah School District and Bellevue College? Like, is that, would there be confirmation that that would be something they would explore with the school district or, or exploring other types of buildings? And so, like, how can we? Because I feel like some of the concern is, like, like, anyone can say that, and then in two years from now, it might look completely different. But like, what are the tools that we have to ensure that what gets proposed to us in two years, like, melds with the values of the community that we're hearing up here tonight, I guess?
That's helpful. Thank you.
And I will just add in, I do want to understand what the options would be with Issaquah School District. I also think it would be very useful to clarify what the surplus process looks like for a state agency and what the RCWs say about surplus land and affordable housing. I'd like to know more about the TDRs and whether there are any affordable housing requirements on here, since the TDRs have already been actualized on the other portions of that. And then, it would be useful information to understand the public benefits that have already been received by this, but also the investments that have already been made in the community to understand kind of what our requirements or responsibilities are in that area. Councilmember Hall again.
Just, can I just ask, does this sound doable, to have this information by the September meeting? I just want to check in and make sure.
We can give it a shot. You know, some of the things that I heard were more market-driven. Is there a market for this and that? And I think that's where their market study that they've done sort of informs, and I'm not sure we're going to be able to give you a straight answer on the market feasibility of the different uses in that area because that is not doable within the timeframe, but even the market can change and so on and so forth. But some of the other pieces, we can certainly, you know, the, the law regarding taxes and affordable units, what's the status of this, that part, for sure, we can do that.
Okay, I am not seeing any other comments here, so I think we have concluded.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Director Dollywall, for getting that additional information. I think that does clarify things quite a bit. So, we're going to move on to the, I think, the last agenda bill we have this evening, which is AB 9040, policy for naming public facilities, parks, and trails, and the action before the council this evening is to make a recommendation. This item was postponed from the July 7th City Council meeting, and I'd like to invite City Clerk Tisha Guser to present the item. Tisha?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. City Council, I am here to just provide a real brief background on the city's park naming policy. I don't have a visual presentation tonight. The city adopted a park naming policy back in 1990, and at the same time, they approved a really long list of the city's current park names. It was interesting to go back in time and look at that. And the policy provides that the mayor appoint a committee and designate certain representation, including from the Park Board, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Historical Society. And then, that committee then recommend a name of a potential park or public facility. And then, there's a short list of criteria. There's four criteria to be used in determining that name. Over the last 35 years, this policy has not been followed consistently. I have seen, from what I can tell of the records, a wide variety of approaches taking to, taken to naming. Some things, sometimes there's a purchase and sale agreement that might allow for the donor or seller of the land's name to be used in the park name. From what I can tell, sometimes a name has just sort of evolved in the park planning process, and there hasn't been formal council approval. The, the current policy does require formal council approval, and for historical record-keeping, it would be nice if more of our park naming had occurred in that way. But much of it does seem to have been more organic over time. I will say that the policy was followed most recently in 2016 with the naming of Senna Park. So, there was a park naming committee convened for the purpose of naming that park, and the council then approved a resolution. So, I wanted tonight to just share the current naming policy. The reason I'm sharing this with you is because at the June 16th Committee of the Whole, Council President Walsh had made a motion to put this item on the agenda with the potential naming of a trailhead after former Senator, Representative, and Councilmember Bill Ramos. And that prompted the administration to want to bring our documented policy forward for your awareness. So, there are some potential options for you tonight. You can direct us, direct the mayor, request the mayor, appoint a committee to proceed with naming a park or the proposed. with naming a park or the proposed East Sunset Way Trailhead after Bill Ramos. The council could choose to not utilize the policy and direct us to bring back a resolution to name the East Sunset Way Trailhead after Bill Ramos, or you could do something different. And so there is not a proposed motion nor a specific recommendation that I'm providing tonight, just that background. I don't have the Parks Director with me tonight, but if you have some questions related to the policy, I might be able to help answer those. If you have anything additional, I will get back to you with information. Thank you.
Thank you, Tisha. Council President, can you look for questions in the room?
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, just a quick one. I'm just curious if the administration would be opening, are open to considering a change in the policy around criteria to include something around individuals, like individuals with significant service to community in the list? And if that's something we could consider in the future, separate from this process?
This is Deputy City Administrator Snyder. I'll speak for the administration in this case. We are open to changing the criteria in the process. We have not updated that in a few years and it could stand for some updating. So we're certainly open to that and would love to hear feedback from council this evening.
I'm not seeing any other questions.
So there were several traces that were put forward by the city clerk and that was to request the mayor to appoint a committee to recommend naming of a trail after Bill Ramos, directing the administration to prepare a resolution naming the East Sunset Whale Trail, Way Trailhead after Bill Ramos, or to take no further action. Is somebody prepared to make a motion?
Yes, I would move to direct the administration to prepare a resolution naming the East Sunset Trailhead after Bill Ramos.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Council discussion?
I'll just start off as the motion maker and just say, I think it's really important as a government that we don't push process in an area where I think there has been an outpouring of support in this area. And so I don't necessarily see that the process that we put in place in 1990 is necessarily still applicable in most cases and certainly not in this case from my perspective.
Other comments?
I'm going to take the, the opposite view and I, I really want to do something for Bill because Bill was A, an amazing person and B, a big contributor to this city. But I also do believe in process and we do have a policy that says, this is how we approach it. I don't think it is, is an onerous process. I think it does cast a broader net by having different points of view on, on what, what the community as a larger thinks would be an appropriate tribute. And so I, I would not support going ahead with the resolution naming the Sunset Trail, but might be open to other, other, other options.
Other commenters?
Deputy Council President?
Thanks, I, I will support the motion. I think we've, as you said, Council President, we've heard an outpouring of support for this option and having done a lot of public engagement throughout my career, people get really upset if the direction is already set and then they're asked to participate in a group that should be open to all options. And we've already expressed our intent with what we would like to do. So I don't want to waste anybody's time or go through a mimicking of a public process when we know that, what the outcome of it is going to be. So I think that there are ways that we could certainly take public input. We've been taking public input and so I would like to go ahead with the motion as stated tonight.
Additional commenters?
Councilmember Jiang?
Thank you. Some of you may know that I was involved in a process to change the name of a mountain in Idaho from a derogatory name to another name that was representative of the historical significance, but still was not offensive to people who might be of Chinese heritage. So my only comment is I'm supporting the motion tonight, but I would like information in the resolution that would talk about the proper way to get that name noted in trail guides or the King County Trail System so we don't have confusion with people going to the wrong place. Our troll shows up on different maps, but I'm not sure how it got there sometimes. And I just want to make sure our trail, if we do change the name, shows up in the proper places and people can find it. And so it's a tourist attraction that people can locate easily along the way. So that'd be my only concern tonight, but I'll be voting for the motion. Thank you.
Any other comments from other council members?
Yeah, Councilmember Jiang?
Yeah, I, I just want to underscore that there is actually, you know, significant community support for this, even though they're not necessarily coming to city council meetings. For example, we've been out door knocking while campaigning in Old Town and someone specifically mentioned, you know, like unprompted, how much she loved Bill Ramos and that she hoped that the city would do something to honor his legacy, such as name a trailhead. Some of his friends have, you know, spoken about this. I mentioned this in passing to one of my friends who actually lives on East Sunset Way, very close to the trailhead and he was like, oh, that would be a really nice thing. He doesn't, he's not engaged at all in politics, but you know, he thought that would be a nice thing to do. So I think, you know, just based on these few like anecdotal data points, it seems like there's support in the community. I did see that, I, I generally agree with what others have said about, you know, oh, you know, if you get a committee of people together, basically just to rubber stamp an idea from the city, it does come across as a little strange. So I would like to see us, you know, change the process, also potentially change some of the criteria. And especially with, you know, the individual who's made a significant land and or monetary contribution to the community. I think based on the naming of Senna Park and also McCary Woods, which was the one prior to that, that does, it's, it's kind of aligned with that fourth point, but not really. And so I would like to, you know, kind of see that expanded. I think also the other thing to note is that in addition to, you know, having been a great contributor to the community and with his legacy of public service, that, I think the thing that really pushes it over the edge for me is that it was such a, you know, for, how, how should I say this? I think it was a place that he spent a lot of time and was, you know, very important to him and that was like his, you know, trailhead that he would run from every day when he was in Issaquah. So that also to me, you know, is another reason to name the trail after the late, great Bill Ramos.
Thanks. Additional comments?
I am, Councilmember Ray?
I was, I was pausing to give everybody a chance on, on round one. I see no point in updating the policy if we don't think that we're going to follow the policy. So if we're not going to follow it, then I say no reason for us to massage it. So if, if it is a really a city council decision based on community input and community vibe, then that's how we should make these decisions going forward. We should not have a, a policy in place that has some criteria that we do or do not like if we're just going to go ahead and say, well, yes, but this one's different and we're going to take direct action. So I, 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 I don't know that the community has spoken. I know parts of the community have spoken, but I think that, you know, we have, it's a community resource, it's not a city council resource. And, and the, the committee is a way to embrace the community and we may have a preferred option and that's fine, it can be very quick, but I think engaging the community is always better than not engaging the community in a formal process.
Any other comments? There's a few who have not yet commented. I know Chris got, or Councilmember Ray got to comment twice, but is there anybody who hasn't spoken that would like to comment as well?
No, and I've seen shaking heads to indicate that. I will make a secondary comment, just that I, I think having a naming policy in place is useful when there isn't someone significantly tied to that. And so if you look at the 2016, you know, naming of Senna Park, that, if you're going to create a park, you have to have a name for it. It's just like, you know, tributaries have to have names and things like that. So having a policy in which you are choosing, you know, the name of several parks or something like that, I do think still makes sense at some point. I don't know if there's great urgency in updating the policy around it, but I would be interested in keeping that or potentially looking at an update at some point.
If there's no additional comments, the motion on the table that's been moved and seconded is for creation to prepare a resolution naming the East Sunset Way Trailhead after Bill Ramos. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I believe that carries six to one, correct me if I'm wrong. And the next item of business is committee and regional report. So we will start with Councilmember Jiang.
No report from me today.
Thank you. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Cascade Water Alliance Board will be meeting on July 23rd, 3:30 PM. Details can be found on the Cascade Water Alliance website. On August 6th, the Cascade Water Alliance Public Affairs Committee will be meeting at 9:00 AM via Teams. The LTAC meeting that I previously announced at our last meeting that was scheduled for July 28th has been canceled. We're going to be waiting until we have a new Economic Development Manager onboard before we take additional steps for LTAC for the rest of the year. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. I have four, but they're pretty short, I'm sorry. So first, for Planning, Development and Environment, don't really have a report beyond what I shared as part of each of our agenda items today, except to say that we're taking August off, like I think all of the other committees. And our next meeting is scheduled for September 9th and we'll be diving into the highly anticipated Title 18 Tree Code update. So we're all very excited about that and the community is as well. Eastside Fire and Rescue Recruitment for our new fire chief is live and applications are coming in now as we speak. Well, maybe not right as we speak, but they're coming in. We have officially moved up what's called our preliminary selection of our new fire chief from October to September to allow for site visits if we want. And I think Mayor Pauli, I think you might have been part of the site visit with the recruitment of our fire chief, our previous fire chief, to allow for full background checks, which take a little bit longer than we thought, and for the apparently industry standard two months of notice for a previous employer for someone at this position. So our current schedule is now this. August 19th, we will receive around 15 or so applicant profiles from the consultants. The next day on August 20th, the Fire Chief Ad Hoc Committee will review applicants and decide around five or six that move forward on September 9th for meet and greets. And I'll be sure to share all that information with you all in case you'd like to participate. And then the next day on September 10th, we have panel interviews and members of city staff and myself will likely be sitting on those panels, so just stay tuned on that. And then the next day, September 11th, is our board meeting to make that preliminary selection on fire chief. We're taking August off, but the fire chief ad hoc will continue its work. Let me know if you have any questions on that in the meantime. But it is happening all at once now, which is exciting, very exciting and nervous. I also announced at the last EFER meeting that given my recent appointment to the state legislature, my intention is to transition out of EFER, EFER leadership by December or early January. The plan is to elect a new chair elect at our September meeting to be integrated into the current leadership team and learn the ropes, because it actually is a pretty decent time commitment, I've learned. And then the idea would be then to kind of transition them into the chair position after I've negotiated a final contract with our new fire chief. So I just wanted to share that as an FYI. I had hoped to be the chair of the EFER board as long as Allen did from North Bend. He's, he was chair for 16 years and I got, yeah, six months so far, yeah. So anyways, FYI on that. That concludes EFER report. So the next one is Riot 8, the Water Resource Inventory Area 8 Salmon Recovery Council. We had an awesome meeting last Thursday, which included at the end, a tour of the new Lake Sammish State Park, Lower Issaquah Creek Restoration Project, which is so cool. I have seen many different salmon habitat restoration projects before and after, but I've never seen when there are a ton of trucks onsite moving dirt, creating new pathways for streams, new places for salmon to just chill out. So it was really cool to, to, to see it all in action and would encourage you to reach out to Mountains to Sound Greenway if you're interested in checking that out. I know, Mayor Pauli, you might have, this weekend, or there was an invitation that went, oh, did you? Oh, good, yeah. Anyways, that was super, super interesting. We also received a draft budget and work plan for 2026 and, and approved some funding for a salmon summit to happen next year and then also a new technical analysis of large wood in priority streams along the Cedar River. I'll send pictures out to the council of the tour because it was really cool. And then the last thing, Safety and Civic Facilities Task Force, Councilmember Martz and I are on that. Our next meeting is next Tuesday for that and it really feels like we're getting closer to landing the plane on this. So stay tuned on that as we land that plane. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Ray?
I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Mart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on Wednesday, July 9th at 7:00 PM for a very exciting meeting. Careful what you ask for, back to the good old days of having a lot going on. On the subject of the King County Transportation District Proposed Sales Tax, we voted unanimously to draft a letter stating that now is not the right time for a new sales tax and that regional collaboration is critical before choosing a new transportation revenue option. We recommended that onto the board and I don't know what the board did with it, but that's what, that's what we did. New indigent defense case standards, we talked about the possibility of taking emergency action in September. Following points were raised, the budget impact of the new standards on cities should be emphasized in the 2026 SCA legislative agenda. Collective action should be taken as soon as possible by SCA. SCA might consider jointly sending a letter to the Washington State Supreme Court and the legislature. PIC members discussed the following elements for possible inclusion in the letter, not asking to change the standards, but to delay implementation, providing new revenue options for cities to meet the standards by the 2036 deadline, and guidance from the state on retention and recruitment strategies and other resources available to cities to implement the standards, and that SCA should partner with the Association of Washington Cities in some capacity while developing, publicizing this letter. I don't know if that's going to happen, but next steps, PIC directed SCA staff to begin developing a letter for potential emergency action at the September PIC meeting. SCA staff is reaching out to Association of Washington Cities and at the July board meeting, staff will discuss the letter, overall message and possible recipients. I don't know what happened at that meeting either because they haven't published minutes from the SCA board meeting. But that was the recommendations that were put forward by PIC. I will be asking, well, we don't have a later August meeting, so if, on this, on this indigent defense case standards, we will, we will have a, we will have a council meeting before the next PIC meeting. So I will come back at the good of the order. I will try to send something out between now and the September, the first September council meeting such that we can discuss at, for good of the order and so that I can go back to PIC with the sense of this body. And last but not least, Services, Safety and Parks will be meeting tomorrow night here in chambers at 7:00 PM. I will be participating remotely, so Council Deputy President De Michele will chair. We are covering COM 0157, TOD Opportunity Center Options, a very, very important conversation, and COM 0158, Three Trails Asphalt Art Pedestrian Safety Improvements. This concludes my report.
Thanks, Councilmember Mart. I do sit on the SCA board. The SCA board moved a letter forward from the 38 city public issue committees as the PIC wrote it, so that one is in play. And on the indigent standards, the original study done on this was to recommend that each state do their own. was to recommend that each state do their own investigation before they adopt the recommendation. And so there's going to be pushback with AWC, hopefully, to try and have our state do the study before they adopt it. It says right in the original study that this is not meant for statewide adoption. So there may be some options there as well. Deputy Council President?
And thank you for that update, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I attended the Regional Transit Committee on July 16th and we had a discussion of progress on rapid ride routes, which are now accounting for almost 25% of Metro's ridership. And ridership is gaining year over year. So if you don't know what a rapid ride route is, those are the red buses. We don't have a rapid ride route out here, but you'll see them driving around other places. The rapid part of a rapid ride is the easy access to the bus. They have special buses that you can walk on, walk off, pay quickly. And so the amenity there is actually the access and egress from the bus. And so there was a good discussion. There are new rapid ride routes going into Kirkland. It's going to be called the K Line. It'll be about two more years before that is introduced. Plus Bellevue has a rapid ride that they have had for a number of years. Board of Health met on July 17th and we discussed three important topics. They always have a packed agenda at the Board of Health. The first one was health impacts on asylum seekers and refugee populations. The second one was new initiatives on wastewater treatment, septic and sewer systems. And the last one was a discussion about how wage theft is impacting safety and security in the food industry. And wage theft occurs when, for example, a restaurant owner requires his people to come in if they're sick. And if they don't, they lose a day's wages. And so there's great concern that this is becoming a pretty common practice. And so there was quite a discussion about what could be done to turn that around. Chair Teresa Mosqueta also agreed to form a subcommittee to discuss potential Board of Health resolutions and legislative advocacy around the subject of federal cuts to healthcare. And I and Kirkland City Councilmember Amy Falcone, both representing Sound Cities Association, volunteered to serve on the subcommittee because, of course, we did. So that will be taking place sometime before our next meeting in September. The Eastside Transportation Partnership, Regional Transit Committee, and Board of Health meetings are all canceled for August.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Council President?
I have no report this evening.
Thanks. And I will pull up the mayor's report for this evening. There'll be an executive session tonight to discuss pending or potential litigation. The executive session is estimated to take 15 minutes. Action is anticipated to occur in open session. Transit-oriented development, the Opportunity Center, housing cooperation agreement. Tonight on your consent calendar, the city council did authorize the housing cooperation agreement with King County Housing Authority. And this brings the city one step closer to delivering more than 350 affordable and market rate rental units in Central Issaquah. The HCA marks a significant milestone enabling permitting for this project to proceed. The city and its partners look forward to the not-so-distant future where critically needed mixed-rate housing and public health services are steps away from transit access, Tibet Valley Park, and a reimagined Central Issaquah. A couple of fun events coming up. The Issaquah Chalk Art Festival. Get ready for a colorful afternoon of creativity and summer fun at the Issaquah Chalk Art Festival tomorrow, 12 to 4:00 PM at the Issaquah Community Center Lawn. This free, family-friendly event invites everyone to grab some chalk and make a creation down the Rainier Trail. In addition to chalk art, treat yourself to an ice cream while enjoying live music from a brass marching band, circus acts by Clown Garage, and lawn games. Bring a blanket, pack a picnic, and stay a while. There's something magical for everyone. A national night out is coming up. This is a nationwide event to promote police, community partnerships, crime prevention, and neighborhood camaraderie. Across the country, communities come together to say no to crime and yes to community spirit. Join the Issaquah Police Department for our annual event behind City Hall at Memorial Park on Tuesday, August 5th, from 5:30 to 7:00. That concludes the mayor's report. I'll move to the next item on the agenda. We're going to be having an executive session to discuss pending or potential litigation, as just mentioned. That's made to take 15 minutes and action is anticipated to occur in the open session. Oh, I think I'm actually, I'm back into, oh, there we go. Okay. The next item before we go to the executive session story is good of the order. So I will talk about a couple of upcoming meetings. The next regular city council meeting is Monday, August 11th. And the agenda items are anticipated to be the mid-year financial update, informational update, which is the citywide work plan and capital projects, second quarter 2025 update, an informational update, economic development, and an inter-local agreement with Lake Sammamish State Parks for sports field use. For the executive, oh, anything else for the good of the order? And Council President, can you let me know if you see any microphones, Ray?
I am not seeing any.
Thank you. We'll talk about our executive session. We're going to have this executive session tonight to discuss pending potential litigation per RCW 42.3.110-N1-NI. It's expected to take 15 minutes and action is anticipated to follow. So we will be going into executive session at 9:17. And Council, if you'd like to take a break, we can start in a couple of minutes if that would be good. So maybe we'll start at 9:20. Anyone who's not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting and you're welcome to stay in the meeting until it's reconvened. And City Clerk, please let us know when we can begin our executive session.
Okay, seeing the sign that says the practice session has ended, we are -- is the red light on in the room, Council President?
It is.
Thank you. We are back in open session at 9:47 PM. Would someone care to make a motion?
Yes. I move we authorize the mayor negotiate and execute a settlement agreement for water account 303458 upon terms acceptable to the mayor and city attorney.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Please let me know if any of the microphones are raised.
I'm seeing none.
Thank you very much. If there's no further discussion, the motion before council, as earlier stated, is to authorize the mayor to negotiate and execute a settlement agreement for water account 303458 upon terms acceptable to the mayor and city attorney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I believe that is a six to one -- vote passes and it is a six to one vote. So there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 9:48. Thanks all.
Good night, Mayor.